I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowers, Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, April 15th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, under petitions and communications, I have a request from Tim Johnson. You can have a seat at the table and one of those little critters is a microphone.
Okay.
I think you can see it.
Well, this will be-
Just say your name and address.
My name's Tim Johnson, 413 Behringer in Urbana. Other than just some non-city council-related stuff, I think this is the first time that I've been at a city council meeting as a city council meeting since 1975. So that was my last year, my last month of service. Be very mercifully brief. I haven't been here for eight years with Heather having served on the city council because really wanted this to be about Heather and her service in the city council and your service. And I feared that if I came down here, then the news would be Congressman Johnson involves himself in city council. But I do just want to express to you personally, Heather, as a father and as a citizen of the 6th Ward, my extraordinary pride in the job that you've done in the city council. I know the sacrifice that's involved for all of you in serving and as a parent and mostly as a resident of the 6th Ward, I just want to say thank you. I also want to say to the rest of the city council, and particularly Robert and Brandon who are leaving, my appreciation for the job that you've done. And I'll expand that to Mayor Pressing and the rest of the city council for the service that you provide. I know from personal experience and more particularly from Heather's experience, as well as all of you, that none of you are here to self-aggrandize yourself. You're here because of public service. And while we may not agree on every single issue, I'm very proud as a resident of the city of Urbana to have this mayor and this city council doing the job that you do. The sacrifice that you provide and the service that you provide for nothing other than doing the right thing is something that I'm very, very gratified for. I see it every day with Heather missing baseball games and various other things, and I'm sure you all have the same sacrifice that you involve yourself in. And I'm just very, very appreciative for the job that you do, and that's one of the reasons that I moved to Urbana in 1949 that I'll never leave. This is a wonderful community to grow up in and a wonderful community to live in, and as again I say, I don't agree with everything, but you don't agree with everything I do either, I'm just very, very proud of all of you. So I just want to say a very sincere thank you to each and every one of you. I'll come back in another 38 years and extend my appreciation as well. Specifically to you, Heather, thank you. Mayor Pressing, I appreciate you letting me be here. And I would also say to Mike Madigan, my neighbor and good friend, as well as the other two new incoming members of the city council, this has been an experience that you'll treasure forever, my four years in the city council, certainly undistinguished, but something that's all about public service, and I congratulate you all for your service as well. Thanks for letting me be here and thanks for the good job you do. God bless you.
Thank you. Just please have a seat and state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes on whatever topic you want to-
My name is Karen Deck. I live at 1907 Country Squire Drive, Urbana. I'm also a small businesswoman that runs out of her home there. And my concern is with the new policy for the right-of-way sewer lines. My question is, does the city, do they directly do the repairs in the right-of-way?
I think we don't have anybody from Public Works here.
Yeah, under option three, it would be the city contractor that did the repairs, which is currently held by Hughes Construction.
Because that's the business that we're in, and I know there's other companies here also going to speak on this. And I was just wondering how we would get to do bids for the city. Because you're kind of taking that out of our money, you know, on our pockets, and we're all small companies, so, you know, I was just wondering how that would work.
Okay. You've raised a good question. You're here to oppose the proposal, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right. Okay, Charlie.
Just if I've added to four correctly, for those who are speaking to this and do want you to speak tonight, this is likely to go back to committee to answer questions like that, if not to just go out there and die, so.
Okay, because, you know, it's not fair to us small business owners who do the same business that we don't, get a chance to put our bids in there.
Yeah, so this is likely, you know, like I said, likely to go back to committee and we'll be talking about this in the future, that's the set, if I've counted four correctly.
Okay. My next concern is, my sewer line runs in the back of my house, so how do I benefit from this?
You don't.
I don't think you would.
[laughing]
And I think one-third of the public would not.
Right. You know-
So those are good issues.
Yeah, so that needs to be addressed, because I know there's plenty of Urbana residents that their sewer line does not run in the right-of-way, and like mine, it runs in the back, so, you know, I just would like to know how that's going to be resolved as well. Thank you.
Thank you. A question for you. Eric Jacobson.
Yes, I just have one question. How long is your, and I'm just trying to get the, kind of the lay of the land in terms of people who do have the sewer line in the back, and I don't know if you're typical or not, but how far is the run from your house to the main line?
Probably about 100 feet or more.
Okay.
It runs, it's right in the back of my yard, so, and I live on Country Squire, so-
Right.
And all those houses back there on that straight run to the back.
Yeah, so as things stand now, you would be responsible for that 100 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And other homeowners would be responsible for, if the sewer line is running in the front of their homes, they'd be responsible for, from their homes to the public right-of-way, which I, you know, in some cases might be 100 feet, in some cases might be less, some cases might be more.
I mean, I didn't go out and measure it today to see how long it was from, you know, but I'm just saying with this proposal, you know, it's-
Yeah. No, I'm just trying to get a feel, I mean, we didn't consider that aspect, we didn't discuss that at length, and I probably will, maybe before this evening, or maybe if we table this or defer it until the next time, maybe we can get a feel for how much of a discrepancy we're, we might be generating between people whose lines run in the back of the house and people whose lines run in the front and will-
Right, because it would only be fair for us to get compensation if our, you know, sewer line goes bad and, you know-
But you understand, people aren't going to get compensated for what's under their property.
Right, right, I understand, but mine is not in the right-of-way or whatever this says, so, you know, I'm just concerned about people's sewers that are in the back of the house.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Johnson.
Mine's 120 feet, and I had to pay for mine. Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson. I'm the owner of Midstate Sewer Service, based here in Urbana. I've read the proposals and the different options. I've been in the sewer and septic business for 30 years, so we're pretty familiar with this item. There were a couple of things. First, I would say that I'm not entirely opposed to the idea of compensating owners for repairs of their sewer lines on the city easement. Having been involved in quite a few situations where that cost of that repair is incredible on to some, you know, to the homeowner, I think the program that we now use is pretty good, especially compared to the city of Champaign with what they offer, but my biggest concern is the fact that, having been in this business for so long and having done that, matter of fact, we're on a project right now on a city right-of-way at the Black Dog Restaurant. That's a fairly significant portion of my income, and the employees that work for my company certainly would be affected by that, should this go through in option three, I think it was, where the city turns that work over to a third party or to another contractor. The way a lot of these projects run is that once, when you start, you're never sure where you're going to end. Not, never, but in a lot of cases, you're not sure where the endpoint is, because now that we have sewer cameras and they have the ability to look into the lines, if a line is blocked, you can't see through the water. It's not like it's spring water in that line, so it's, you go until you find a spot, and if you find a good spot in, you can stop right there. If we're held up at the curb or at the sidewalk and have to bring someone else in, that, I can't envision that that's going to be a 10-minute ordeal or a one-hour ordeal or maybe even the next day. So we have a homeowner that's without septic or sewer services that's being held up even more than what it would be had we just continued on, I think. So from a logistics standpoint, I'm not really a big fan of option three. Given the history of the contractors in town, we've got quite a few good contractors in town that do this, and we have a few that maybe aren't as good as others, but overall, I think the city has experienced a pretty good track record with having private companies perform these repairs. I don't think there's anything or that Public Works would, that I'm aware of, that would have an objection to continuing this type of work. You know, we do quite a few, and they're done to city specs and inspected by the city, and all that process, it works seamlessly. I mean, and I have a lot of praise for Public Works. They run that place a well-oiled machine, and when we need assistance, they're there for us, and I think that that needs to be brought into this. The other thing is, where does this stop? If this starts up with the city covering a lot of this, will this then lead to the city covering the storm sewers? And the work on, if a home has a footing tile that drains the basement and that runs across the street to a city storm sewer, is that going to be brought in on this? Because it's the same issue, you know, it's exactly the same infrastructure, only one's solid waste and one's storm water. So that, I think, needs to be factored in as well. So that's pretty much the points that I wanted to bring up. But I would, my opinion would be, I would be for option one or option two, certainly against the third option, so that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to call on Jesse W. Wald.
I want to do the proclamation first.
You want to read the proclamation first?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's so hard to hear.
I think Jesse would like to talk right now. I will not get in the way of Jesse.
Hi, my name is Jesse Wald from 611 West Illinois Street, and I love bike rodeos and Bike to Work Day and Bike to School Day. And why I like biking, I don't really know, it's just, I think it's just because I've been biking for so long, and I think Urbana is a really great place for biking, but cars go too fast, maybe they should go a little slower. And over on California Street, there are two curbs near Leo School, and I go to Leo School, so, I like, I would like ramps there instead of curbs, and, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a proclamation, which I should probably read now, because I think some of our younger audience members need to leave. This is a proclamation, "Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. And whereas community leaders and parents can determine the bikeability of their community and identify any potential challenges to safe bicycling using a bikeability checklist, and whereas community members and leaders are working to make changes to enable children to safely bicycle and walk to our community, in our communities, and are working to support and encourage students to bike and walk to school. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to evaluate bicycling and walking conditions in their communities, now therefore I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2013 as National Bike to School Day in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day." So, thank you. And would you like the proclamation?
Cheese. Cheddar cheese.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
My name is Jesse Stevens. I own Stevens Underground Solutions here in Urbana. It is, just like the other two people, it is a small sewer company. I won't repeat, all the points I had were very similar Steves, however, the one difference is, I do sewer lateral lining, so I rehabilitate old sewer lines without having to dig up the street. And one of my main concerns is, is that if the city does take over ownership in a way of repairing these lines, why would any homeowner want to repair or rehabilitate their lines so that they don't have to dig up the street? So therefore, it cuts out any homeowner that would say, you know what, I'm going to reline my sewer from the house to the city tap, rehabilitate it. Our manufacturer puts a 50-year guarantee on that line after I'm done. There's no homeowner in town that will spend the money to rehabilitate their sewer to prevent a breakdown in the street, you know, if the city is going to take ownership of repairing it. Just as the city, Public Works now, relines all your mains so you do not have to rip up the streets, my system will reline a sewer line from the house to the mains so that you don't have the expensive breakdowns and stuff. It's usually typically half the cost of tearing up the street, and you get a 50-year guarantee. However, like I said before, my main concern is, is if you guys pass this policy, everybody's just going to sit back and let their sewers or drain lines fall apart, because they know the city will pick up the tab. So nobody's going to be proactive to keep them clean or to reline them so that they don't have future problems. That's my main concern with this, is everybody will sit back to let the city pick up the tab. And I understand it's expensive, and as Steven said, I'm in favor of either option one or option two as far as a full reimbursement, or, and I know there's been some talk of it, or if they would be so proactive as far as offering a policy where if homeowners would be proactive and say, you know what, instead of waiting for it to fall apart, I'll go ahead and reline my line, if the city would reimburse part of that cost, then it would save both the homeowner and the city a lot of dollars per sewer line falling apart.
Charlie.
Yeah, quick question for you. So you just need a clean out from the inside of the house or back of the house, wherever the clean out is, to do the lining?
Yes, sometimes we have to dig a small hole next to the house if we don't have a good, like if the sewer line goes through the basement floor and then out, we just dig a small hole outside the house, clean line good, and then we reline it from the house out to the city main.
So do you ever have to cut a hole out in the street to do some of the work, or?
Only if the sewer line has collapsed in the street.
Okay.
But as long as they are proactive, you know, as, we have a lot of trees here in town, if the tree roots are getting in, they're having to get their sewer cleaned out, that's a good time. We usually suggest to homeowners, get your line camera, see what shape it is. If it looks like its structure's starting to break down, then if you have it relined, you'll never have a collapse like that.
Yeah, and then, now do you do the pipe bursting too, or is that-
Yes.
Yeah, you do, okay.
I do pipe bursting and pipelining.
Okay, so now when you do pipe bursting, there, do you need to have a connect-
Yes.
You have to cut a hole in the street, right?
Yes, if the city main is in the center of the street, we still have to cut a hole.
How big a hole do you need to cut?
Depends on the depth.
Oh, okay.
Typical holes, eight by eight or 10 by 10.
Okay. And that, is that still less expensive than trenching across the street, or?
Yes, pipe bursting is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Eric.
So, you know, just to recap, especially for people who weren't a part of the beginning of the discussion, we were responding to a question of equity, and the question of equity of people on opposite sides of the street who only, on one side of the street, had a very short run to the main, and on the other side of the street had a much longer run, and therefore were in financial jeopardy and greater financial jeopardy, and the fact that, actually, when houses, you know, change hands, mostly people don't know where the main is. So it catches them quite by surprise. So we were moving towards, as well as we could, a policy that was both fair and transparent and cost-effective. And I think, you know, I'll just speak for myself, but my guess is that I'm really speaking for everybody, that, you know, since we now have another perspective on this, that we will probably take another look at it, those are going to be the things that we're going to be looking at, fairness, transparency, simplicity, you know, so that everybody understands what the rules are, and they're simple enough for everybody to understand, and cost-effectiveness. But I, for one, really, you know, I really appreciate your input and those of the others who've come forth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anne Marie Treglia, is that how you pronounce it?
Treglia.
Treglia, okay.
I'm going to have my colleague with me, since he has a lot of history.
Okay.
So my name's Anne Marie Treglia, and I am from Mason, Michigan with Dart Container. So obviously, I'm here for the noise ordinance. And one of the things I just wanted to state, I've been working with my colleague Dennis, who's actually our plant manager here, so he can give you more of the history. I put on the card that we're not opposed to it. Really, what I'm requesting is, if this were to go to a vote tonight, that you would take in consideration doing a delayed implementation, because we have been trying to comply with all the concerns regarding noise, and we have work ongoing at the facility to try to bring the noise levels down. We have them down significantly lower than they had been in the past, but they're still a tad bit above what the threshold is in the document. I noticed in reading through also the ordinance that there's some nebulous areas in terms of, and I'm not an attorney, but just in my reading, I work for the attorneys, and my reading of this, you're saying, once they're notified, I mean, there's things where it's like, well, what is notification, a formal letter, is it a phone call to the plant, and then there's seven days? Or it has to be done in a reasonable timeframe. Well, what's a reasonable timeframe? Is that 30 days? Is that 180 days? So there's other clarifications I think we would need, and we're happy to work with the city council, but I'll let Dennis also, you know, talk a little bit about what measures have been already taken to try to bring this, the noise levels down, because it is, we take it seriously at Dart, you know, for being a disturbance, because we want to be good neighbors, so.
My name is Dennis Baumier, I actually live in Mohammed. I've been at the Urbana plant for two years now, actually in April, and actually, it was probably within the first few weeks, I had a visit from, you know, some folks in the city to explain to me about some noise issues, and as Anne Marie said, I think we're taking it very seriously. I can tell you this, that the decibel reading at our property line, I know when we were taking some readings, was probably about 78 decibels, and it may have been higher at times. And now we're taking readings on a daily basis, and we haven't seen anything above 66. So I think we've made a tremendous amount of efforts to reduce it. You know, and as Solo Cup and now Dart Container, we're continuing to spend a lot of money to do this. And as Marie said, part of the issue is, a lot of these things we're doing take a long period of time to do. Whether we're looking at relocating cooling towers or replacing them, moving them from the east side of the, excuse me, the west side of the building to the east, away from where the neighbors are, those are things that you, you know, you're planning, we're planning on doing, but they could take a year to, year and a half, two years, to plan them, get the appropriations through, and actually get the physical work done. Again, you know, we're trying to work with the city on this, we want to comply with this, but we also want to make sure that it's something we can work within the guidelines of the new ordinance, and that we fully understand what it is going forward.
Okay. Dennis?
And of course, actually, within my ward are some of the people who I've, have been in contact with quite a long time, I would say for years or more, who want this issue to be addressed. But I am aware that you've worked with members of community development, you've had meetings with them, and I know you've gone through, the building's gone through an ownership change, which, again, you know, puts everything in kind of a different perspective. But my understanding is that you have really been very cooperative, and there is a long-term plan in place, so I really commend you. I actually really commend you for just wanting to come and talk to us personally. A lot of times, for myself even, I'm not really involved personally in the staff, at the staff level of communications, and so I don't always know exactly what's happening. So I think that's really great that you came to talk to us. We're trying to address a longstanding problem. It sounds like we're closer and closer to solution, and this ordinance is not intended to be aimed at any particular company. We do have a history, you know, in that corner of the neighborhood, but there are other industrial sites that are also coming to play that may be reviewed as well, so I just want to say I appreciate your input, and I don't think we're going to do anything that's going to be jeopardizing our goodwill.
Thank you.
Robert Lewis.
Well, I appreciate you coming in, too, and one of my concerns is the cost to your company in terms of what it's going to cost to relocate evaporative condensers or cooling towers or whatever. An option that I think might help reduce the cost would be attenuation. I know oftentimes evaporative condensers and coolers around hospitals use that to really reduce their decibel levels, because it's required in some of the larger cities. So maybe, I don't know what kind of equipment you might have, but I would check with the manufacturers, and maybe they have attenuation they could probably provide for you at a lesser cost than relocating plumbing and that kind of thing to, and pumps and all that stuff. I know that's very expensive.
We're actually looking at all of those options right now, and some of the options we've looked at in the past is, because the structure of the building, the year it was built, to add something like that, that acts like a sail on the roof, would actually cost a lot more than actually to relocate some of the equipment. So we're kind of limited on what we can do because of the, you know, the way the original structure was built, but we are looking at all of those options and bringing some additional engineering assistance in to help us with that.
Charlie.
Thank you for coming. One of the, Dart came up when we were talking about this, and we were, in hearing from staff, we were under the impression that progress is being made and sort of expected that by this summer, you'd be fully compliant. And so a question for staff, a question for attorney, would be that if there's some kind of remediation plan in place, progress is being made, can we pass this ordinance tonight without having any repercussions to Dart going forward? tonight without having any repercussions to Dart going forward here? You know, are they on a schedule that will get this done in a manner appropriate and in conformance to the ordinance as proposed? I think that's sort of what you're asking, isn't it?
One of the concerns would be, I know in the document it says that there's a $200 daily fine. So, if we have a plan in place and then all of a sudden this is passed, but it's going to take us six months to reach the level you want, but we have the plan that's going to work, that we're going to be fined, you know, consecutively fined, which is, of course, is going to add to our cost of doing business.
Answering the legal question, the provision states that the director of Public Works has the authority to enforce. That gives the director some discretion on whether and how to enforce. There's no language in the ordinance right now to provide for a plan of remediation, but I have to believe our Public Works Department, being the folks that they are and being understanding of businesses, suddenly having this ordinance dropped on them, would enforce it in a fair and reasonable manner. And I would imagine that as long as efforts are being undertaken and progress is being made pursuant to a plan that's submitted to the Public Works Department, they would probably refrain from exercising the authority that they have. There's nothing to prevent, if I'm requested, I certainly could put in a section that would cover that kind of a thing. But then you get in, just so you understand the problems with that, you get into, well, what is cooperation and what is a plan of remediation? And I think what would have to be included to make the ordinance effective and not neuter the ordinance would have to be some kind of a plan with a completion date. But that certainly, if the council directs me to do that, I could do that. Otherwise, I think our Public Works people are very fair and reasonable in how they address all these kinds of situations.
Eric? Libby wants to comment, sorry about that. Libby Tyler, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, and I would just say that community development and Public Works have been working together long-term with the staff at the, at the plant, seeing the progress. So, we would continue on that path in terms of enforcement. This would be in place for other locations or in the event that we were not proceeding down the plan that has been several months underway. I know Scott Tess is here tonight, and Robert Myers, who's been the primary contact, is not here this evening, but that's my understanding. So, I hope that gives you some assurance that this does not signal any deviation from the course that we've been pursuing with Dart.
Okay, Eric Jacobson?
I guess I'll only speak for myself, but I'll tell you that, I mean, it sounds to me as though we should not be levying fines on you tomorrow if we pass this tonight. And I can only assure you that if the Public Works were to completely change their character and do something that's totally out of character, different from what they did, and you came back to us and said that they had lowered the boom on you, we would chastise them severely. And I would chastise them severely, and I'm sure that other council people would as well, especially given the fact that, you know, you have the support on this for cooperating with you on this from the, from a person who represents a lot of those people, from Mr. Roberts. So, I think that you can count on continuing along the path of working with you that we have been.
Now, if I can just say, we appreciate those comments. I mean, that is what we're hoping for, to keep the cooperation going. I mean, we are definitely working towards reaching the goals that are set out. We just, as you mentioned, we don't want to be penalized if we're in the process of making a correction, so.
Brandon?
One last question. If we did decide to just do a sort of delayed start date or implementation is July 1, or do you have any particular time, would you expect that the round of what's happening will get you below the noise thresholds?
Well, again, our plan is to try to get it done before the end of the year.
Okay.
And again, now that Solo was bought out by Dart, a lot of things that Solo stopped funding toward the end, when they knew the acquisition was going to happen. So, we're kind of starting, you know, ramping it back up now. So, that's put us back a little bit. We're still doing a lot of the smaller things, but the things that are going to be larger capital costs, some of them were put on hold, so we're ramping those back up.
Okay.
And our goal is to get them done by the end of 2013.
Okay, thanks, that's helpful.
So, you're going to do the same thing that Solo had planned originally?
Some of the things, and actually, there's a lot of, as we keep moving forward with this, there's a lot of things we find out that'll be much more beneficial to do than the way we planned to do things originally.
Okay.
So, as we learn more, we'll do something that's a better solution, long-term.
Dennis?
And I guess my inquiry would be, as a plant manager, you have a certain amount of say about the direction, or you make, obviously, you make suggestions and recommendations. And I'm sure that some upgrades in materials probably are good just for business sense to upgrade, you know, upgrade equipment.
Right.
More efficient equipment, silent equipment, et cetera. Do you have the support of the ownership, the board of directors or whatever, of the corporation to make these, continue with these corrections and changes? I understand that the board may not be here in town, they may be somewhere else, and they may have different plans based on financial considerations on that timeline. So, do you have a commitment from them, or is this not firm yet?
We do have their support, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Bowmeyer? Oh, that's you. Well, thank you. Gail Walden?
Hi, I live at 306 West Washington. Is that what you need to know? My name is Gail Walden.
Yes, thank you.
I'm here to talk about two things. One is the noise ordinance, which I hear has changed, what are the hours, seven to, seven to seven? Seven to eight. And while I understand, first of all, I was wondering how much input you got for, I just found out about this, from the community. I'm completely opposed to changing the weekend hours. I really like quiet Sunday mornings. I have people on my block who will work at any time that they can, and that's the only time that I have quiet, and I think seven, even on Saturdays, is too early. I can see maybe for construction that seven makes sense for people who have to work, but I don't think you should change the weekend hours at all. I hope you've got some other responses to that.
We did.
Okay. My second thing doesn't have to do with something on the role tonight, but I hope I can talk about it, because it has to do with people who are leaving the board now. This happened during, during this current board. And this is about a variance that was given at 304 West Washington, next door to me, for, to allow, there's two houses on the lot, to allow the lot. And the major variance was given, even though all surrounding neighbors came, wrote letters, explained exactly why we thought it would be bad for our houses, for everybody to have that. I don't even think it was fair to the petitioner to give it. And Heather, I think you talked about individuals' rights, but neighbors are individuals too, and we've been really hurt by that. My whole sense of community and what we can do to be proactive and to say our piece and have it heard was greatly diminished in my sense. So, I'm going to be writing an official request for an inquiry into what happened, because people ask me all the time and say, who did he know? How did he get this? And I don't know. But it has affected my house a lot. It's affected, construction is hard anyway, but to not be heard when you come in, I think as much as we've had to deal with the construction for three years, it would have been better had you just said, okay, I listen to this, you guys live next door. When I lived in Tucson, anybody next door, I can see if one person has an argument, they could be quirky, but if every surrounding person has the same argument, then I think you have to listen to them. And in the code, there is something, if 80% of neighbors in a 250-foot area disagree with this variance, there's a formal petition. We weren't told about that, but when I asked Brandon about it, he said it wouldn't have mattered anyway, there were enough people voting yes. But I wonder, then, why is that in there? What would have mattered? How would you get somebody to deny a major variance? So, I will be writing more extensively about this, but I wanted to talk about it while the people who voted for it were on, it's not a court, I don't know why you call.
What was the variance?
It was to allow a second, there's a second house there. It's to allow both houses on, both houses can be lived in in the same time.
Okay.
But they aesthetically read as a two, two-house lot, and there's very little ground cover, so I was worried about water issues, which have, my worries have come to fruition now at this point, so.
Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just briefly comment. I think, in my mind, there wasn't any secret to how it happened. There was notice in a lot of public meetings, and I know that we changed the criteria over time as it got debated many weeks here and put more strict controls on what could happen with that second house in the back after the family moves into their new home. And in the end, we did not all agree. I know I disagreed with many of my colleagues on that one, and it was maybe a five to two vote. So, those are, those are the hardest cases that, at least in my eight years on city council, we see, is when it's neighbor against neighbor, trying to figure out what's fair and how you balance the property rights of one neighbor against the property rights of the next, so.
Well, my sense is then you need stricter guidelines, and you need to write them in that neighbors have. Otherwise, I think it's too influx. I'm not sure if a woman had asked for this petition, she would have gotten it. If an African-American had asked for this petition, she would have gotten it. I don't know that this isn't just, you know, somebody who is on some committee with somebody else who can, it doesn't make sense that some people get variances and some people don't, and you have to have some sort of firm guideline, you know? If this many people say, no, we don't want a major variance, this is already going against, by the nature of a major variance, against the rules of the code. And I don't even know how this got that far, but, and that's another thing I would like to have looked at, how it even got to city council, because two houses aren't supposed to be in the same lot in Urbana.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Did you want to say something, Eric?
Yeah, let me, I just would make a comment that we are, we are nothing if not transparent. So, we are not perfect, but we're an open book.
I guess, I'm just going to say this, is that I've heard so many rumors about how this came to be that I don't feel like bringing up in public, because they are rumors, and I will write those in the letters, but that's why I am, I'm asking for an inquiry.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess I shouldn't actually invite this, because it's more work for staff, but if you do a FOIA request, you'll get all the correspondence, more than you probably can read. It, there's nothing, there wasn't anything that, there was, there was no deal-making behind closed doors, I promise you, but you could, but you don't have to accept my word for it. You ask for your, you know, find out for yourself, ask for all the records.
I don't think it was a conscious closed-door deal-making. I think without structures, I think this fell apart. I think it was the wrong decision. And I think without structures to say, okay, if 80% of people are against this, and you do have that in your code, but you don't tell people, that was closed, you didn't tell people that that was available, Brandon, I don't think you even knew about it, he's my, he's my delegate. So, that was sort of not transparent to us. I didn't know that until, so I, I don't, I don't sense that anybody did anything overtly undercover, but I also don't know, were this in a different part of town with a different person, that this variance would have been the same, would have been approved. And I think you have to have some, some structure.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at your letter and see what we can do. Thank you very much. Evelyn, Reverend, excuse me, Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. It doesn't, did you not want to say anything?
Yes, I do when it comes up.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that on the card, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'll call you when it comes up.
Thank you.
Henry Cal.
Hi, everybody. Wow, this is, this makes it exciting. I am a computer science major at the University of Illinois. I've been elected by the Student Senate over there to represent the student body in this chamber, so I don't have anything in particular today to say, but I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody, say hi, and yeah, I'm here to represent the student body. You know, there's a lot of stuff that people come to talk to me about, and it's like, you should go fix the bike lanes, or like, what are you doing about, about like campus security or something? And you can't, we can't fix those issues on campus, that's, you guys have to do that. So, I'm hoping that some of these issues get taken care of, and I look forward to working with you over the next year. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and a lot of those issues are taken care of by the university, but we work very closely with the university. Eric?
I just ask you to take one other message back, and this was something that, you know, I talked to people about on Quad Day. Local government, and you know this, but I'm asking, you know, since you might be well-positioned to spread the message, local government affects students. It affects students with respect to, you know, how, you know, the housing around town, the restaurants, the places of entertainment, everything about this environment, you know, as soon as you get out of the center of campus. So, please send back the message that students ought to register here and they ought to vote here.
This is definitely something that is a problem. I think that like seven students voted in the last city council elections. I'm, I'm sorry for whoever, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is, I mean, that's why I took this position, because I feel that it definitely is something that's important, and not many people do, do know this, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bishop King James Underwood also would like to speak at the time of the sewer discussion. Robert Michael Doyle.
Robert Michael Doyle, I live in Champaign, so as a non-resident alien, I'll try to be polite and brief lest I get deported. Earlier this semester, I took a course through Osher Lifelong Learning Institute on City of Champaign Government, taught by Councilmember Tom Bruno for Champaign. However, there were speakers to that course from both cities, and I was very impressed by the things I learned about local government and the two cities and how they respond to a variety of things. And so, partly, I want to compliment you and the City of Urbana's mayor, council, and staff for the things that I learned about how well you do things or try to do things. I'm mainly here because of the change in council membership tonight. I, as, both from my reading in the paper and over the years, and also from that course, I am impressed by how dedicated local people are that serve on the councils and what a good job they try to do, and how also, how seldom there is really bitter, bitterness over the biggest agreements that arise. I know in some smaller towns, it can be very bitter. I'm from a small town. Anyway, and the other reason I'm here, or the main reason I'm here, I guess, is because I'm a student of local lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered history, and I just want to commemorate the first time in Champaign County history in which, in which one openly gay person has, is being replaced in the same position by another openly gay person, and I always want to commemorate all our little marks of progress. As Mayor Preciousy knows, I try to stuff them all into the proclamations. I don't want to do it this one, but anyway. So... So, thanks to Brandon Baursocks-Johnson, Robert Lewis, and Heather Stevenson for your work over the years. Thanks to Heather Stevenson for not getting upset when she found me wandering around in the basement of her house. I did have a reason to be there. And I look forward to Carol Ammons, I, she was very helpful to me when she was on the Champaign County Board, and of course, Bill Brown. My only problem with Mike Madigan is I don't know him, and I'm going to have to keep in mind that he is not that awful person who runs the House of Representatives that I have my problems with.
You might not know him personally, but I'm sure you've eaten some of his food if you've gone to Hickory River even once.
I've been there a couple times, yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to discuss what I think is a key issue. Is there anyone else who wants to address this Urbana City Council at this point? Oh, Heather wants to, okay, go ahead, Heather.
Just 'cause I, I had no idea my dad was gonna be here, and so, I am so sorry, I cried, I, that was just too much, and I am, not one for surprises at all. In fact, my kids have to buy my Christmas gifts on Christmas Eve, because if they buy them before, I either look for receipts, or I open them and then rewrap them. So, the sign, and then my dad being here, was just too much. So, anyway, I just want to say that, being the granddaughter of the late Robert Vincent Johnson, and the daughter of Congressman Tim Johnson, the legacy that they left is one of big shoes to fill. And so, to be able to come into the city council and be here for eight years was an honor. I enjoyed working with all of you, and I just appreciate the collaborative efforts that we as a council made through goals, and just, even though we might not agree, just the understanding that we all had, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts through the years, and just to make this city a great place to raise families and a great place to live. So, thanks to city staff, to my colleagues, and congratulations to the incoming council, Mr. Brown, Mr. Madigan, and Mrs. Ammons is here somewhere. Good luck to all of you, and I hope that you can continue with working together as well as all of us have, and I appreciate everyone so much, and I, I would be, you know, if I walked out of here without saying anything, I, I wouldn't be very happy with myself, so thank you to everyone. I just really appreciate everything.
Well, we appreciate you, Heather, and feel free to come back. You can always be a member of the audience and tell us whatever you think about any topic.
Thanks.
Now you can really cut loose.
Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, I have all those same sentiments, and I want to just say especially to, to the residents of Urbana, and, and to the city council, the new members and the continuing ones, that I really have learned how precious local democracy is, and how unique and special Urbana is. It really functions, our government listens on a local level to people. People come here with ideas, and we hear them, and we debate them, and we try to build consensus and do what we think is right, and that really functions here in a way that it doesn't function in every town, or it doesn't function at every level of government and everywhere else. So, so we're incredibly lucky, it's really precious, and I know it took years and years of people's work to build that up, to build up people's trust in their local government, and such an effective local unit of government here, and it's something that, even though it took a long time to build, I'm sure it would be easy to get rid of, to hurt people's trust, or to, to have it function worse, but, but all the hard work of people over so many years has built up just a wonderful little gem of, of local government that works in the best interests of all of us. So, I was honored to be just a part of it, and I hope that all of you, as you continue to serve, will keep working so much to, to make this the wonderful, functional, little precious gem of democracy that we have here. So, thanks.
Was there somebody on this side who wanted to talk? Charlie?
Oh, well, I, I wanted to thank the three of you for, for your service. Eight years ago, we were pretty much a new council, you know, a lot, a lot of different faces around here. It's gonna be a little shocking to see three new ones after all this time, but I'm, you know, as democracy moves forward, we're all part of the machine that, that keeps us going as a society. Heather, I have a question for you. Are you, are you sending that fourth generation our way? You know, can we count on somebody in a few more years to continue the legacy?
Oh, well, that will be up to them. I do have four children, and I have one granddaughter, so that would all be up to them, and, you know, it could come from another sibling, maybe, or maybe a niece or a nephew, so we'll see, and, you know, to each their own. I do have a daughter who, we'll see. She was, my, when she was five years old, my dad would take her campaigning, and she just was made to, made for politics, but she thinks she's gonna be a doctor, so we'll see.
Eric?
So, I do want to say something about Robert, whom I will miss a whole lot, and I, every once in a while, if you go back and look at the videos, you'll see that every once in a while, Robert will lean over and say something to me quietly, and this is usually some wildly different perspective on what we're talking about, that I never would have have thought of, but is, is often very, very insightful. So, the, and so, I'm, I'm hoping that, that your successor, Robert, will be as, as wise and interesting as you are. She's got some big, she's got a big seat to fill there.
I guess I gotta say something.
Yes, you do, you do. You must.
Well, I'm not.
You gotta turn your mic on, too.
I'm not a person of a lot of words, but I do, I really appreciate the opportunity of being with this council. As I recall, it was fairly new eight years ago. I looked around at my previous experience with the city. It's a culmination of almost thirty years, if you look back on it, starting in community development and the planning process. I've been engaged in all the areas that the city presently has that provides information to council. The only difference was that we didn't make the decisions, we just made proposals. So I decided eight years ago that maybe I need to make a few decisions, along with the council. And I really appreciate the opportunity of working with you all. I have things of my own I want to try to complete from an engineering standpoint, and hopefully I'll get a chance to do that. I will miss some of the words of wisdom I hear around this council. I'm not gonna get into details, because I could get pretty ugly in a minute. But we have statisticians on board, we have people that have come to this council, and it's difficult to sit here and uphold the duty that you are bound to do, and the people are gonna take an oath shortly, and not to say things for two general public people that come to you and may say the wrong things. And it's very difficult for me to hold my tongue. I did it for eight years. And I'll have to pray for Charlie while I'm off this council, because he has a strong propensity to want to challenge people that say the wrong things. And sometimes that's good, that's good debate and healthy debate, and I think that that's worthy of all of us. We all can get into it pretty deep. I listen a lot, and I say very little, but hopefully what I say is significant, and hopefully that as you go forward from here, the people that are coming on board, Mrs. Ammons, I think she can handle this seat very well, and it's not as big as we think it is. That's all I got.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna miss you, Robert, and of course, you are welcome to come and comment and give us advice as a citizen. I'd like to discuss a very serious situation that Urbana is facing, and that is that Urbana is being forced to pay charity care for a region of 1.2 million people. And this is, Mike Bunson and I have been working on this for a few weeks, and this is what, some of the things that we've learned about it so far. I believe this requires a legislative solution, but I want to outline the problem for you first. Carl Foundation Hospital is a regional medical center that serves twenty-five counties in east-central Illinois and parts of Indiana. The taxpayers of Urbana, a city of forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty people, are being forced to pay for much of the charity care in Carl's service region of 1.2 million people. Urbana taxpayers, only three percent of that region's population, will now be paying for almost $6 million of the nearly $16 million in charity care that Carl says it provides the region. We have a new state law that allows Carl to shift a disproportionate amount of the cost of its regional charity care to Urbana taxpayers. Senate Bill 2994 passed a year ago as part of Medicaid reform allows not-for-profit hospitals like Carl to qualify for a near-total property tax exemption on hospital and clinic properties. Most of this property is in the city of Urbana and has been taxable. The loss of Carl's $61 million in assessed value will lower Urbana's total assessed valuation by, of $569 million by almost 11%. Exempting Carl and shifting its tax burden to every other business and resident of Urbana will sharply increase property tax rates in Urbana by almost 11%, not only for the city, but also for the school district and the park district, and any other district that has property that is assessed in Urbana will also have a tax increase, but the rate of the increase will be, depending on how much of, it'll be lower than 11%, depending on what Urbana's share of their tax base is. This is an unsustainable burden for Urbana. It is significantly higher tax rates will force Urbana onto a downward spiral, unable to compete for businesses and residents. They did, they undid a Supreme Court ruling. Since 2005, Carl has been paying some property taxes. In 2007, Carl sued the Illinois Department of Revenue, Champaign County, and the Cunningham Township Assessor over this issue. In 2010, the Illinois Supreme Court ruled that another town, another Urbana hospital, Provena Covenant, did not qualify as a charity, because most of its income was from fees for service. Therefore, it was not entitled to a property tax exemption, a ruling with clear implications for Carl. A charity is an entity that gets its revenue primarily from donations and gives its services to those in need. In 2012, the Illinois Hospital Association, perhaps the most powerful lobby in Springfield, set about to undo the Supreme Court ruling by changing the definition of charity in state law and allowing hospitals a property tax exemption for charity care. The new provision, buried in a gigantic bill to help solve the state's Medicaid finances, greatly expanded the definition of charity by hospitals, and it shifted the burden to local governments who were not given a chance to participate in the drafting of the legislation or to comment on it before its passage. Legislators never heard about the devastating impact on a small city such as Urbana, which hosts two regional hospitals. Is Carl a not-for-profit charity? According to the report they filed with the Illinois Attorney General for 2011, Carl is claiming it provided nearly $16 million in charity care. Carl also paid $10 million in real estate and other taxes. Carl is exempt from both federal and state income tax because, because it is categorized as not-for-profit. Part of the responsibility of such a tax break is to provide care for the indigent. Charity care and property taxes have not crippled Carl's bottom line. The current markups on its cost for service already more than cover the cost for health care for the poor and the taxes it was paying to Urbana. The report shows the hospital's total revenues exceeded expenses by $107 million. For every dollar spent, Carl Hospital took in $1.31. If the hospital is given the additional nearly $6 million in tax exemptions in Urbana, their net income would rise to $113 million. Then they would be taking in $1.34 for every dollar spent, and this calculation is based on 2011 figures, and their 2012 report is not yet available. Carl Hospital is a highly profitable business. They earn far more than most businesses. Does any other business in Urbana take in $1.34 for every dollar it spends? All that net income over the years has provided Carl Foundation with $764 million in unrestricted net assets, and its chief executive officer is paid $1.2 million a year, according to the report filed with the Attorney General. Yet Carl continues to contentiously litigate with local taxing bodies to increase its already incredibly large profit margin. Carl Hospital can easily afford to pay its fair share of taxes. With three-quarters of a billion dollars in unrestricted investments and a spectacular bottom line, there is no excuse for Carl to undermine and destabilize the city that has provided the foundation of its business for over seventy years. The city of Urbana has provided streets, police, and fire protection, and all other city services. Urbana schools and parks benefit Carl as well. Urbana taxpayers deserve better from the business they have helped build. So I think that's the major issue that we're going to have to deal with, and I'll give all of you copies, and I'll give copies to the new board members, because this is our main issue. Anybody have a question?
Thank you for putting it so succinctly, actually.
Well, I worked on it for a long time. Okay, we will move on. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole, that is Heather Stevenson.
I don't know how this happened, but it did, so, anyway. Ordinance number 2013-04-038, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 24, Section 24-38, building sewers and connections. For the committee, I so move.
Motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any discussion? Charlie?
We have two people, or one or two people want to speak to this motion, but I intend to move to send this back to committee as soon as, as soon as the public speaking is done.
Well, Charlie, hold on, because this is sewers and connections, and the next one is the laterals.
Yeah, but they go together.
Well, I know they go together, but.
So, I'll, I'll move that we consider these in omnibus fashion, is that, if that's a proper motion?
I don't think we can, 'cause it's in council.
I'm gonna send it to committee. I don't want to, I don't want to, like I said.
Well, you could, do, would you like to say anything at this point?
Yeah.
Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana, Dr. Ellis subdivision, and a, in ordinance amending Urbana City Code, as you just said, Chapter 24, Section 24 hyphen 38, building sewers and connections. It was the expectation of many of the residents that option three would be passed tonight.
Well, I think that was the expectation of many of the council, too, but, but we, but we do this in two stages, because, just to be sure that, that we have a chance for full discussion.
Beg your pardon?
Yeah, so Phyllis, Clark Clark said that we could consider this in omnibus fashion, so if that's.
So, then, ordinance number 2013-04-039, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 2013-02-016, and establishing a cost reimbursement policy for repair of illegal connections of private sanitary sewer service laterals to the storm sewer system.
So, I don't think this is gonna pass legal muster, our attorney, I'd like to hear his opinion on this.
You should probably do them individually.
One, you should do them individually, and two, you do have a motion on the floor, and a motion that has been seconded.
Yeah.
So, how, what the vote is on the motion is. So what the vote is on the motion is obviously up to you all.
Okay. We could vote on it, and then there could be.
Unless somebody wants to make a move to make an amendment, and then that is second, then you got to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Charlie was first.
I just want to move to send this back to committee, and I'll move the second one in the same fashion after we get this done.
Second. Okay.
I think you're better off stating that not as a motion, but to amend the motion that's been made.
I'd like to amend the motion that's been made to send this back to committee.
Second. Okay, motion by Charlie, seconded by Diane. Any discussion?
Eric had something.
Eric.
Yeah, I voted for the the motion under question or the initial the document that that we're now considering sending back to committee, and I just want to say that I guess I'm going to repeat a phrase that I used before. I voted for it because it seemed to me fair. It addressed the issue of equity that was brought before us about people on two sides of the street because the it is extremely transparent and quite simple, and because it is it the Public Works analysis is that it was cost-effective, it was highly affordable. So in light of, you know, the further points that have been raised tonight that I hadn't heard before, I will support a motion to defer it and consider it further, but I just want to say that any alternative that comes before us will have to be equally fair, at least equally fair, transparent, and cost-effective for for me to support it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Dennis.
Yeah. Probably due to some similar reasons. I think we had an excellent discussion here, and I think that we were able to listen to the neighborhoods and the neighborhoods' concerns and came up with, I think, the feeling that the city council really would like to support those individuals whose sewer lines run under the street incur extra extreme expense to have them repaired and the and to make that an equitable experience for people who have short lines or long lines under the street. I think we haven't lost we haven't lost that direction or goal. For myself, maybe it's more of a technical thing that because we've specified three specific ways that the sewer line fails, I think maybe not includes all possible reasons why a sewer line would have to be dug up and have the cause of the street repaired. So it's possible that you may have the failure of a line, and it may not create a sinkhole. But if we say that it has to create a sinkhole before the repair can be made, I think that's a limitation that we don't necessarily have to have in here. And so the same way with whether one has to have it tell it your sewer line televised first before the lateral collapse is validated may be too onerous for people who just need their sewer line repaired. So while I'm not sure that the direction's going to change as far as our intent, I'm concerned a little bit about some of the details so that people aren't cut out for help from the city by a technicality. And so I'd like to have some of the wording looked at again, and so I'm willing to wait and go back to committee and have more information.
Diane.
I support deferral of this, too, because I think this ordinance just needs more work, and I think we need to consider the perspectives that were brought to us from the business community tonight. So I look forward to working on this and coming back with a better ordinance that still meets all of our goals.
Eric.
So I don't know if any of the business people are still here, but I guess what I'm wondering is is whether the whether those whether those concerns would be met by by having individual jobs be bid, but and so I guess I guess the only comment I'd make is I I'm assuming, but maybe it should be stated, that that Public Works will probably be back in contact with those folks and and see if if there is a if there is a bidding process that would make that would essentially make this ordinance workable from their point of view.
Brad Vannan from Public Works.
Thank you. I can comment a little bit on that. One of the issues is that for city infrastructure work, contractors have to pay prevailing wage rates, which are established by the state, and I believe it's actually a state statute that we have to pay prevailing wages. So one of the issues is a lot of these contractors don't necessarily pay the prevailing wage. They could if they so choose, but there's also a lot of paperwork goes out. You have to submit certified payrolls to the city. We have to verify that indeed they were paying those prevailing wages. Also, for city contractor work, we have fairly high insurance limits that we establish and fairly high bonding limits. So, you know, we do bid out our sewer work. It does go out for public bid. Anyone can bid on it, but, you know, typically for a lot of the smaller contractors, it would be difficult for them to bid on our contract to get those insurance limits, to get those bonding limits, to go through the, you know, all the paperwork that the city requires as well as doing the prevailing wage thing. So, I mean, it is possible for them to bid on the current city work, you know, and they're entitled to do that, but they would probably have difficulty meeting some of the requirements. And we wouldn't want to bid out every sewer repair job because, I mean, that would just be kind of overwhelming for us to put out a separate contract for every sewer lateral repair. I mean, we typically try to bundle all our sewer repairs in a one- or two-year contract just to make the administration of it easier.
Dennis.
Yes, my understanding is that any company, any business can apply to the city and fill out the forms that make them bidding, you know, available to do bids bids on city work. And as long as they can meet the requirements that the city sets, they become a valid bidder, a valid company that can be referred to for for work in the city. We've had people come and say, well, why aren't more minority companies and businesses being used by the city? And again, I have to say that, you know, we are not being selective, except that we have a form that has to be filled out, and the requirements are on the form, and if that company can meet those requirements, they're certainly welcome to become one of the city's competitive bidders. Now, whether it's going to be effective to do bidding on a job that requires immediate service may not work out for the city, but maybe there can be a pool of pre-qualified bidders who could be called on a, you know, a twenty-four-hour notice or something like that to handle these bids, handle the jobs. So maybe that's a thing that this Public Works will have to figure out. Well, you know, but I appreciate the fact that you're going to give us some more information about what makes what's feasible and what's not feasible as far as that question goes.
But when Public Works came here that night, when you came and did that research, didn't you talk to the business people when you brought that research to the council the other night?
Yeah, I mean, we talk to the sewer contractors all the time.
That's what I thought, and then they came tonight, but they didn't come then.
Yes.
And then everything has changed because they came tonight. But when we came here, we came about Dr. Ellis subdivision, and and now it's the whole city, but we came about one particular issue, one particular neighborhood. Now it's about everything. Robert Lewis, what do you think?
Well, I think that once once the policy and the ordinance has changed, then it will affect the entire community of Urbana. And my initial thoughts were that if the city takes over the right-of-way, that would eliminate the significant cost to the individuals irregardless of where they live. And I think that the solution in three was one that was significant in terms of meeting the objective we first thought of. Number one, to have the city take over the right-of-way, and two, for the individual homeowner to accept the responsibility for their line to the right-of-way. And I think that's what that does, right? The significance of this, since I dealt with government contracts before, I really understand the process that they're going through, the process of prevailing wage, the smaller contracts, it would make it difficult for them to bid on a contract because of, number one, the million-dollar insurance, all the double it doubles up on them. And I think we need to have a conversation with the small contractors and find out what they're really really talking about, because the volume is really not here in terms of what the number of projects we're going to be working on.
So we are left out in the cold again, Dr. Ellis subdivision.
No, no, no. It's just a small delay to make sure that the whole community is online.
Fifty years ago, what happened to us and Dr. Ellis? We need to go back to that. What happened to us fifty years ago?
What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for, what I'm looking for right now is a solution to satisfy what we first started with. And the monkey wrench that's in the that's thrown in this thing right now is the small contractors and what we can do for them as a city. Now, if it takes another week to figure that out, that's fine, but I don't think it should complicate what we've already decided. We had three alternatives. We had some language that might be addressed or whatever's that's not, but the essence of it is the fact that in your subdivision, the city would take over the right-of-way. They would take care of what's under the street so that the people wouldn't pay that extra burden on repairing a sewer line. So it people are starting to think about all the other possibilities, and that's fine, but I think the essence of it will still hold. But I think we need to let Public Works work with the contractors to find out what their essence of what they're talking about is and satisfy them as well, and then come back to the city council and get this approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have my five minutes, Ms. Mayor, and I'm talking to Mr. Robert Lewis.
Okay.
He tried to interrupt me.
Ma'am, we are in the middle of discussing a motion, and I think that they I know, but you had a chance to talk, and you've had you've had your say.
Did I have my five minutes?
Mm-hmm. Yes, you did, and we're this is not where we have public comment at the moment. We're right in the middle of discussing an amendment to a motion.
Well, I was confused. I thought I was up here to speak.
You yes, you were.
And you didn't hear when I was over.
You were, but you're not here to continue a debate when we're in the middle of discussing an amendment to a motion.
You should say, Dr. Underwood, we're through with you, and I would have gone back. I thought I was part of it.
Okay, well, we appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, I will say it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comment?
And the motion is to send these two items. Ordinance number two thousand and thirteen dash oh.
We're just doing one at we actually, we have two on the floor, which is incorrect, but we're we're going to vote on this one, and the question is, should it be a roll call vote?
Do I need to withdraw my second motion?
Yeah, okay, that might be easier.
If you're looking for a procedural way to accomplish what you're looking at, the most efficient and effective way of doing it is if the original movement withdraw the motion and the second withdraw the second.
Okay, so I moved.
Then it will not be on the floor.
I moved two thousand and thirteen dash zero four dash zero three eight, and I moved two thousand and thirteen dash zero four dash zero three nine, and I got seconds to both of those, so I'm going to withdraw those motions.
I'll withdraw my second.
And who was it, Charlie?
Okay, so now we have a motion which is on.
We have no motions.
We have no motions.
Okay, no motions, all right.
Mayor.
We'll start over. Mr. Smythe.
Okay, given that there are no motions on the floor, I will move ordinance numbers twenty thirteen oh four oh three eight, which is amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-four, Section twenty-four thirty-eight, buildings and sewer connections, and ordinance number two thousand and thirteen four thirty-nine and ordinance repealing ordinance number two thirteen two sixteen and establishing a cost reimbursement policy back to committee.
Second. Second.
I think I can do both like that, right?
It would be cleaner if you did one at a time.
Okay, let me just do the first one, then. I'm just going to do the okay, my motion is only to four thirty-eight.
Second.
Okay. Does that require a roll call? Okay, just a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Smythe.
I'd like to move ordinance number two thousand and thirteen four thirty-nine and ordinance repealing ordinance number two sixteen and establishing a cost reimbursement policy for repair of illegal connections of private sanitary sewer service laterals to the storm sewer system back to committee.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Heather.
Ordinance number two thousand and thirteen dash zero four dash zero three six and ordinance amending Chapter sixteen of the Urbana City Code. This is in regards to noise ordinance for the committee, I saw move.
Okay, motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Charlie Smythe, and you would like to comment.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, we last time we met, we had a discussion, and there were some questions which were addressed, and then staff took the ordinance back and looked through it more thoroughly, and two issues came up. So we've addressed those issues and passed the amended ordinance out to you. So staff would propose that you approve the amended ordinance instead. The two issues, one is air conditioning units. According to professional literature and some staff testing out in the field, air conditioner units are generally emit in the fifty-five to sixty-decibel range. So as the ordinance was written, the most of the AC units in the city could be considered in violation. So we have a proposed change to the definition of mechanical stationary noise, just to say that residential air conditioner units that are properly working will not be considered to be mechanical stationary noise. And if they are malfunctioning and making too much noise, then they would be in violation, and we would go ahead and enforce against them. And then the other the other minor change is just to change a few numbers around just so that the police department, they'll be able to continue citing Section sixteen point two of the ordinance, and so they don't have to have their tickets reprinted, things like that. So we just changed a couple of numbers around.
Did you want to say something, Tony?
Yes, would this be the time to offer an amendment to this?
I think so.
Well, any discussion?
Has anybody made a motion?
I motioned, Charlie seconded.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I would like to propose a slight change through an amendment to Section sixteen dash seven, and this is in response to feedback that I've received, and I think most of the council members have received as well, regarding the times of operation for use of equipment to perform construction or maintenance. So in Section sixteen dash seven, I move to insert the following language after the word seven AM, and it would read Monday through Saturday and between eight PM Saturday and ten AM Sunday. So that's my motion.
Okay, a motion by Diane Marlin, seconded by Brandon Bowersox Johnson. Yes, Diane.
I'd like to speak to that. Based on the feedback I've gotten, most people have indicated that they recognize that Monday through Saturday really is our workdays for industries like the lawn care industry, landscapers, construction to a certain extent, and home remodeling. Keeping the hours between seven AM and eight PM Monday through Saturday makes it more consistent with the champagne and Savoy hours, which makes it easier for companies who are trying to schedule workers across both cities. And I think it also helps us make our city employees use their time more effectively. But people really value the peace and quiet on a Sunday morning, and this original ordinance had scheduled seven o'clock start times for all this activity. had scheduled seven o'clock start times for all this activity, seven days a week, and I think we really do need to respect the desires and the requests of the residents to have some extra peace and quiet on Sundays. So, I, I'm proposing the ten o'clock time on Sunday.
Dennis.
Um, yes, I think, I think that it's important to try to preserve quiet time, Sunday morning. What I'd like to point out is that current, that the new hours that are being suggested here come with the new ordinance that's just being drafted, and that the current city ordinance, according to the memo that we got from staff, says that, that the noise ordinance of the city prohibits construction between eight in the, eight PM at night and eight o'clock in the morning. So that's, so we're actually allowing construction to start an hour earlier during the week. When we, and the reason is that we've had comments that roofers and people who are working in the heat of summer like to start earlier and then lay off earlier, which, you know, we can accept that perhaps from a health standard for people who are working, working conditions. That these, the hours in the ordinance currently from eight, that there shall be peace between eight PM and eight o'clock in the morning is being changed then, but it does say also that on Sunday, construction cannot begin until noon. So if the current ordinance says that construction cannot begin until noon currently, is it wise to go to ten o'clock in the morning? Do people prefer that, or would they like the construction to begin at noon? That's my question. I think that for most people, they prefer to have a quiet Sunday morning, and they're willing to understand that people are going to start getting up and mowing their lawns after noon. And I think that that would be the wiser time slot for Sunday rather than ten o'clock. I don't think anybody really has to start pounding on their, on their roof or building their house, their addition, you know, until noon on Sunday when they have ability to start at seven in the morning any other day of the week. So, my, I would like to propose that I'll make a, an amendment, an offer to amend the amendment and to retain the noon starting time on Sunday.
Hmm. We didn't vote on your amendment yet.
We don't have to yet, because I'm amending it first, right?
And I got one, Charlie Smythe, sir.
So this is an order of amendments now.
We have layered amendments.
Yes, if I could speak to it.
Okay, Charlie, are you next?
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I was going to propose the same thing as Dennis. I think we've got a popul, population in Urbana that is used to a noon Sunday time. It's going to be bad enough having seven AM the other six days of the week, which, you know, I oppose, but there are so many other good things in this ordinance that I'm probably going to have to vote for it. But I, I think it's important to at least keep Sunday the way we've had it, people are used to it, and I would agree that I think noon is a better time to set for that quiet time.
Eric.
Yeah, I suppose we're all kind of extrapolating from our own experience and our neighbors' experiences and so forth, but I will vote against the amendment to the amendment, because I, I would, I think the ten AM time is, is extremely reasonable, and I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying, gosh, I shouldn't be able to cut my grass until noon, and it doesn't make sense to me.
Brandon?
Yeah, I tried to listen to all the people who spoke out about it and all the emails I got, it was helpful to hear the different perspectives. I think nine or ten AM are reasonable, so I'm going to vote no on the change to noon, but yes on Diane's motion to change to ten.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Dennis?
Yeah, I guess I'll speak to it again. I think that, that we just are a society that needs to take a break occasionally from our, from our commercial pursuits and give ourselves quiet time. I think, I think parents and anybody who, who works hard during the day would like to know that they could sleep in and not have somebody starting their lawnmower or they're nailing their siding up, you know, while they're still trying to catch some winks or have a pleasant breakfast on the patio. I hate to wake up to the sound of the mower across the street or wherever it's going to be. I don't think that two hours delay in the timeline is going to noticeably damage anybody's project on Sunday, but I think that the quality of life is going to be somewhat diminished, and if we already have a standard now that allows people to have a peaceful Sunday until noon, why are we messing with it? I just don't understand it. So I, I would urge people to, give people the consideration of a good Sunday morning respite, and then, sure, we can all be, our Puritan ethic can kick in and we can start getting really busy and having projects at, at noon, but we don't have to carry the commercial Puritan must-have-things-done-quick ethic throughout the entire week.
Robert Lewis.
Well, I must be kind of strange, because I got church sun, on Sunday morning.
I was just thinking the same thing.
I don't, I, I'm praising the Lord at eleven o'clock, and I don't want nobody cutting the grass out there, disturbing my, my church service. Do you? I don't know, maybe you don't go to church, but I go to church, and we start early in the morning, and we go all day. So I, I'd be offended at anybody starting their lawnmower up outside the church, even at three o'clock in the afternoon. Just points.
You're not going to make an amendment, are you?
How many, how many church members I got in?
Okay, Heather.
Going back to the Sabbath?
Heather.
No work on Sunday.
There you go, we couldn't even mind our clothes.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the amendment to the amendment? Which is to keep it at noon.
Noon on Sunday.
On Sunday. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed?
Nay.
Sounds like the nays have it.
No.
Should we do it by raising our hands?
I said to keep it, tell them to keep it at noon.
How many are in favor of keeping it at noon?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, three, how many, oh, four, sorry, sorry, they were just louder. Okay, how many opposed?
A minority usually.
Nay.
Three, okay, it carries.
I, thank you very much.
All right, now, we have...
So we need, do we need to vote on the amendment?
We have the ordinance as amended, right?
No, we have the amendment.
We now have to vote on the amendment that was amended.
We're going to vote on this now.
Oh, okay, the rest of the, the rest of the...
The amended amendment.
The amended amendment.
The original amendment.
Yes.
The original amendment, which was ten o'clock.
Is, is now noon.
Now noon on Sunday.
And we just voted on it, but that was an amendment to the ordinance, so...
We just need to vote on this, on the amended amendment.
It's the amended ordinance, correct, Madam Clerk?
The amendment that they just voted on that passed killed the other amendment, and it does not matter now.
Right, so we're voting on the amended ordinance, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the original ordinance amended to say noon instead of seven o'clock.
Seven, yeah.
Okay, Charlie.
A question for our attorney, do we need to insert any kind of language here to allow DART time to complete their currently planned work by the December twenty thirteen?
That's what I asked Diane, I said, does that mean we need to get some language in here, so?
The way it is drafted now, it's up to the Public Works Director, he, he or she would have the discretion how to enforce that part of the stationary mechanical noise section. If you want to include a section, you wouldn't include it for just DART, it would be a section that would allow any person or any entity with stationary mechanical noise problem some time to remediate, to work with Public Works, to develop a plan or submit a plan to Public Works that's acceptable to Public Works. That could be put in there, but right now, obviously, it's not in there.
But it does say reasonable though, right? I mean, it's not, it's not spelled out in detail, but it implies that if someone's working on something and they have a reasonable plan, they're not going to get penalized.
That's why the language says the Public Works Director has the authority to.
Right.
It doesn't say the Public Works Director shall enforce. So there, there's flexibility, but again, it's up to an individual rather than it being codified.
So we could keep an eye on things and see how it develops?
You can always mod, amend the ordinance as you go along, if necessary.
If it becomes onerous, we can amend it, okay, okay, as long as we have that option later.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this ordinance as amended? Apparently we are. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Heather.
Ordinance number 2013 dash zero four dash zero three four, and ordinance amending Schedule H of Section twenty-three dash ninety-three of the Urbana Local Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Search Street at Cottage Grove and Green Ridge Drive at Country Square Drive, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Robert Lewis. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Heather.
Ordinance number 2013 dash zero four dash zero three five, and ordinance approving the Champagne Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget fiscal years 2013 through 2014, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Charlie Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Heather. Okay, it is now time for the changing of the guard. Let's give applause to our outgoing numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, the way this is working is that I will swear in the new city clerk, who looks familiar, and then she's going to swear me in, and then I will swear in the council members.
What you may now is for the new council members to come to the council round.
Okay, would the, the new people please come forward?
I will read the oath of office, which everyone is going to repeat at, at their appropriate time, but just so you'll hear, hear it, you raise your right hand, then you say, I say aye, and you will say your name, having been elected to the office, whatever your office is, for most of you, that will be Alderman?
Council. City Council Ward One, or whatever your ward is. In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champagne, Illinois, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office in the city of Urbana to the best of my ability. And I'll say it in phrases, so you don't have to remember the whole thing, because I never can, so...
Yes, it is right now, given it to me.
All right, would you please raise your right hand? Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Your name.
Phyllis Clark.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk...
Having been elected to the office of city clerk...
In the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana...
In the county of Champagne, Illinois...
In the county of Champagne, Illinois...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office of city clerk...
Of the office of city clerk...
In the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Now it's my turn to swear at her. Aye.
Your name, please.
Laurel Lund Pressing.
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champagne, Illinois...
In the city of Urbana, in the county of Champagne, Illinois...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office of mayor...
Of the office of mayor...
In the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, Madam.
(APPLAUSE).
Just read that one, and they all have to say it.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Having been elected to the office of...
Having been elected to the office of...
City Council Ward Seven. City Council.
City Council Ward One. City Council Ward Two.
City Council Ward Three.
City Council Ward Four.
City Council Ward Five.
City Council Ward Six.
City Council Ward Seven.
In the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana.
In the county of Champagne, Illinois...
County of Champagne.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
Of the Urbana City Council Ward...
Urbana City Council Ward One.
Ward Two.
Five, Ward Six.
Ward Seven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Yes, I hope you got it.
(APPLAUSE).
Oh, sure, why not?
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll of the new Urbana City Council? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Reports of officers, do we have any officers that want, oh, Libby Tyler, our Director of Community Development?
I just have a few announcements, and then we'll have our economic, monthly economic development report. This has been a very busy week, we started our market at the square first Saturday on Saturday, and of course, that will be every Saturday morning through November. We also had our neighborhood cleanup this past Saturday in our two target areas, and many of you participated in the Champagne Urbana Bike-to-Work Day on Wednesday. You may not know... You may not know that we did have a competition between the City of Urbana staff and officials and City of Champaign staff and officials for the number of participants. And the wearer of that competition was calculated as a percentage of the workforce. So, in Champaign, they had ten percent of their municipal workforce participate in Bike-to-Work Day on May first. And in Urbana, we had thirteen point seven six percent. So, and I would like to recognize Rebecca Byrd and Scott Tess as our two co-coordinators for the city's efforts. And there is a trophy that was fabricated here in Public Works, and I will. We will be displaying this in City Hall, but thought we'd bring it.
That looks like some kind of animal's horns. Anything else?
Yeah, now, economic development.
I'm Brandon Boyes. I'm the redevelopment specialist, filling in for Tom Carino, who's in DC at Champaign County First this week. I'm just going to give you a few updates on the economic development activities report for the month of April. It should have been emailed out to everyone, including our new council members. So, just a few highlights. I'll keep it brief. The hour is late. The Urbana Business Association held a ribbon cutting at the very beginning of May here for Langacker Law. It's a new tenant on the first floor of County Plaza, fully remodeled space right across from the courthouse there. In addition, there's ongoing renovation at two oh six, two oh eight, and two ten. Well, actually, we'll talk about that one more next week for cake design and development, and that's the restaurant and co-working space. I think we'll see a new facade going on to two oh six in the coming week or two. Unfortunately, Winds of the Pines has closed out at the Pines. And however, we've received word that there is a new tenant coming in, hopefully within a month or so. Up on Cunningham Avenue, Creative Thermal Solutions Campus, they've been issued permits for a new building. That area's been growing quite a bit, and subsequently, staff have been working with Frasca Associates, Frasca Field, and Soccer Planet to add several parcels to the enterprise zone to allow for additional incentives in that area. And that'll be coming to the council on May thirteenth. We held a public hearing earlier this month. No negative feedback so far, only positive feedback from our business owners up there. Work is underway at Gregory Place East for a new number seven salon and spa that they'll be opening in the suite next to Christie Clinic. This is in addition to the new Co-Fusion Restaurant, a second location and a slightly different concept from their downtown Champaign location, which will be going in at Gregory Place West. So, we've got some nice activity there on campus. In addition, final plans for Campus Circle, the new multifamily housing development on University Avenue, student-oriented, are under review. It's a great big project. We're excited that it's continuing to move along. In East Urbana, there was a dedication for the new streetlights at Hunter Street and Austin Drive. It was on the eighth, excuse me, the nineteenth of April, featuring the Learman Neighborhood Action Committee, many city officials and staff who worked to make that happen. In marketing, our marketing coordinator, in coordination with the UBA, distributed over two thousand Urbana Loves Runners fans, which you may have seen, little hand fans. I don't think it was particularly warm that day, but a lot of people were able to write the names of their runners on there and display them proudly. Urbana's, as Libby Tyler mentioned, Urbana's Market at the Square had its first day. It was a great day, a little rainy, but a great day for the first day of the market. In addition, the market held their first advisory board meeting this past month. And if next Saturday can't come soon enough, you can check out the May-July Artist of the Quarter exhibition in the hallway here. And that is featuring photographs from the Market at the Square. Lots of color, lots of produce. In addition, our planning staff attended the APA National Conference in Chicago. Our director, Libby Tyler, made a presentation on West Urbana as part of a session on top ten neighborhoods in the US. So, we had, Urbana had a presence at the National APA Conference. The Urbana Business Association has hired a new events coordinator, and this is very relevant because that new events coordinator is a former public arts intern. Her name is Jessica Snyder. We're wishing her luck. Shannon Beck, the outgoing events coordinator, is getting married and will be moving to Buffalo at the end of May, and we really wish her well. And lastly, UBA was certified as a green business by the Illinois Green Business Association. We held a green ribbon cutting for them in downtown. They're the third business in downtown Urbana to receive that designation. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have an announcement. We have a distinguished fire chief who's going to be retiring. We're going to be losing Mike Dilly in July. So, we'll be trying to fill those boots. So, thank you very much, Mike, for all you've done for the city. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else who has a report of officers? Any other officers? Any new business?
I have one.
Okay. Carol Ammons.
I got to get used to the microphone having to be turned on. Certainly, I appreciate being able to be seated this evening and get right to business. I've provided through the clerk's office for each of you, packet on participatory budgeting process that I would like the council to have a study session on. I believe Ms. Libby Tyler, who was just sitting here at the APA conference, this was presented by several cities as a way of really developing engagement around the budgeting process prior to the final action on the budget. And I think this is a great way for us to incorporate and expand public participation around those issues in areas that are really important to the public and could have been a very good tool to use when the issue of the bike lanes came up, if this was part of that process in the beginning. So, I'd like to see us put this on for a study session for our next committee meeting. And so, if the board members haven't looked at this, I'll also send you another reference with several other cities and information on it as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? They're paying no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.